Just to the agenda.
Commissioner Duncan, if we may, I would request we move item one behind either the building code or the agricultural protection area items so that Vlad has time to pull up his information and properly load it on the computer.
Okay.
And that way we won't miss any items.
Yes.
We'll just reorder them.
That is fine. We can handle item two first. I'm not intending to deliberate on that this morning, so we can get into that. All right, conflicts of interest.
None.
Okay. And item two, O R A two four dash zero zero one zero, and this is building code ordinance update. And Director Callahan?
I will just open up by saying this is a typical thing we do periodically in order to stay in step with the changes that occur on the state level. But we have our chief building official, Christina Garland, with us. She has done all of the background work on this. I'll turn it over to her to give you what this is truly about and why.
Okay.
Good morning, Chris Garland, for the record. So the changes to the up, the new proposal for the building code ordinance is I've added in the residential code, three new definitions. One is a loft, which there is no definition in the building code for loft. Lot of designers tend to like to use the word loft, and so we just wanted to make that a code reference for definition. Another is the landing platform for that loft for eagerest purposes. The third is for sleeping unit. There is no definition in the building code, in the residential building code for sleeping unit. And so-
For what now?
For the sleeping unit. So I wanted to introduce that in as a new definition. So those are the three new. And then the remaining is just an update from the Idaho amendments. Some items that were in our previous ordinance five five nine were removed, and so I removed them out of this six oh eight. And a few more items that for life safety, which makes a safer building, based on what the code indicates, because the state of Idaho has removed the fire sprinklers from residential buildings.
So if, are you saying that we're keeping them in, but they've removed them? Or they removed them, so we removed them?
No, they removed fires. The state of Idaho has removed fire sprinklers from the residential building code. So we cannot adopt that since they removed them. We're just increasing the fire life safety in the garage and in attached dwellings. So this way, if there was a fire in the garage, it helps the occupants to escape from the burning home in a timely fashion.
So you're increasing the fire resistance?
Yes.
In lieu of-
In lieu of fire sprinklers, yes.
Okay. And does the, did the state do that as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then I understand that we're going from 2012 to 2018?
No, we already are in 2018. Twenty twelve was probably about four years ago.
Okay.
We haven't changed that in, from five five nine to six oh eight.
Okay.
Yeah, the last set of amendments moved everything up to 2018.
So not this set of amendments, the last set of amendments?
Yeah, the prior.
Okay, because I just saw in our copy, the twelve was crossed out and the 2018 was added.
Oh.
Was never removed.
Yeah, the one, the one I have has all 2018, so.
So this is the 2024 or 2018?
Eighteen, twenty-
Adopting 2018 and 2024.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, I guess, what I'm asking. If we are 2012 today, but if we approve this, we're going to be 2018?
No, that is incorrect. We are in now 2018, and we will remain in 2018.
Okay.
Yeah, there may have been a typo that got corrected.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, first paragraph of seven one three oh two, it does cross out 2012 and have 2018, but that's to correct the typo that wasn't caught when we actually moved to 2018.
Okay, do you remember when we moved to 2018?
I can look it up.
I believe in 2020 is when we changed from the code cycle of 2012 to the 2018.
So then basically, this is just updating the document-
Correct.
To reflect the 2018, which was not done in 2020.
Correct.
So this is a formality, in essence.
Yes.
And if I may, commissioners, I think I confused the chair in a phone conversation yesterday. I was thinking wrong. So now you have the facts in front of you properly.
Okay, well, I'll still want more time to go through this, just because it's a lot of changes. And typically, it would be nice to have a workshop or presentation, because I had no idea this was even coming. And when you're talking about the different years of building codes and stuff, I just would like more, more time on it. I do have another question for Pat, though. If we choose not to follow the state, what does that mean?
Well, we have to follow the state. That's state law.
Okay, so as far as when, if they adopt the 2022 or 2021 international codes, then we have to as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The only other option is to not enforce building codes at all.
Right, right. Okay. All right, any questions for staff?
No, this is pretty much something that, like I said, a formality. It sounds like we're already have adopted the 2018 code.
We have for four years now.
Yeah, that this document is memorializing that.
Right.
So in essence, there's no real change as far as operational, the operations go for community development. This is a document to just say, to say, here's the document to support the operation.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Except for the new additions, which are belong to us and not the state.
Well, those-
Definitions.
The definitions, yeah. But, but we don't have a def, you say a sleeping unit, but in essence, it's a bedroom.
Correct, yes.
Just to clarify, that is something that state law does allow counties and cities to do with, with the building codes.
What is that?
Yeah.
To add-
This is, this is set for a public hearing, so I don't know if there's any public testimony to be had.
Yeah.
Do that before we make any motions.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't done yet.
Okay.
I just was asking if, if the board had questions.
Right, yeah, I'm just being paranoid, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay. All right, if the board has no more questions, then I would call for public testimony, either in favor or against the ordinance change. There's no one in the audience, so is there anyone on Zoom? No one is on Zoom. Okay. I am fine to take a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations, but I still would like to hold off on deliberations to a date certain.
What date are you thinking of?
Whatever the next thing is. I think it'd be the ninth, January ninth? Is that our next one?
Deliberations, I think, January ninth.
Yeah, we could do 10:00 AM.
Okay. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I move that we end public testimony for O R A two four dash zero zero one zero, building code ordinance update, and enter into deliberations on January ninth, 2025.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, thank you. Are we ready for Vlad's presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to handle item one, which is a zone, a rezone, Z O N two four dash zero 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 six, Venue Properties LLC. Platter Finkel, please.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development. I apologize for the technical issues we had this morning. This is a public hearing for a zone change case number Z O N twenty four dash zero 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 six by Venue Properties LLC to rezone three adjoining parcels of land from rural to commercial. The subject properties are located on the east side of Highway 95, north of the interchange with State Highway 53, and south of Garwood Road. The parcels comprise of approximately thirteen acres. Two parcels are located on the west side of Pope Road, and one parcel is located on the east side of Pope Road, just south of the two northern parcels. The property is relatively flat. There has been some disturbance on the two northern parcels of land, and there's been some minor disturbance on the eastern parcel. Zoning allows primarily for residential uses and other uses that are, can be either conditionally approved or by right permitted in the rural zone. However, the applicant's desire is to expand their current nursery business that they operate out of the city of Hayden to this location and have a second site for them to operate out of. And that would require them to rezone the property from rural to commercial, which would then be a by right use. Furthermore, because the two northern parcels are fronting State Highway 95, the code would require them to go through a special notice permit. And there is also potentially a requirement to go through a special notice permit for the eastern parcel based on the number of trips that the business would generate. Based on the preliminary T I A, traffic, trip generation analysis, T G A, it appears that they may not be needing a special notice permit because the number of trips generated by the proposed business would fall below the threshold of fifty trips per day. The comp plan designation for the northern two parcels is suburban, and the southern parcel is country. As you can see, the two northern parcels are over the aquifer and would be, would have to comply with the stringent P H D regulations for wastewater discharge. However, the southern parcel would not be subject to the same requirements. These are some of the photos of the parcel in question. The, these parcels are primarily, or these pictures are primarily of those two parcels that are budding State Highway 95. During the agency comment period, we solicited comments from the agencies listed on, on this slide, and no one really had any issue with the proposed rezone. Obviously, they would have to comply with the access requirements as stipulated by the Lake Seaway District and building code requirements as well. Staff solicited comments from all the adjoining property owners, and we only got one comment in support of this, excuse me, in opposition of this request, really without much of an explanation. We did, we do believe that the request is compatible with the existing conditions in the area. Specifically, if you look at the zoning map, there are quite a few commercial and light industrial parcels that are closer to the Garwood Road interchange or overpass with State Highway 95. You have quite a few light industrial businesses on the west side of Highway 95. You have commercial development north of the subject property. You have more commercial, mining, and light industrial parcels that are closer to the Highway 53 interchange, south of the subject property. So this, we find that this area has been changing over the course of last decade or so. It's been, there's been a progression of intensification of parcels in the area from residential to more intense zoning, such as light industrial, commercial, and mining. Therefore, we don't believe that this would be out of the ordinary or would not be compatible and perhaps detrimental to the surrounding development. This property is located next to Rimrock, so a majority of these parcels that are east of the subject property are at a much higher elevation. And so the development here would likely have very little visual impact on these parcels that are east of the subject property. So this request came before the hearing examiner on October 3rd of this year, and the, the hearing examiner subsequently recommended approval of their request. We solicited comments again from the adjoining property owners with another thirty day comment period, and we are here before you today for a public hearing. As you know, a zone change does require a minimum of two public hearings unless the board is in a disagreement with the hearing examiner's recommendation, then that would necessitate another public hearing. And for any questions?
Been on that one. That used to be the requirement until last June 30th. On, as of July 1st, that requirement for the additional hearing has been repealed.
Oh, fantastic.
Can Mr. Braden clarify, is there something that needs to be amended in the code for us to?
No. State law was amended to where on a zone, a zone legis, you know, on a zone change or a legislative matter like a ordinance amendment, if, if the board does not agree or makes material change to the recommendation of the hearing examiner or planning commission, they don't have to have a second public hearing before the board anymore.
Okay, that, that is good to know.
Yeah, I'll mention that tomorrow, too, since you apparently did not know about that.
I did not.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Vlad?
Um, yes, and it's really more just informational in the sense. The comp plan is supposed to kind of say where, what we're able to do with the zoning and so forth, or, you know, what the zoning should be. And I'm just curious, how come the comp plan hasn't, has this still as rural, I guess? And, you know, how come it didn't kind of see that typically in these main arteries, you know, we want to look at commercial and light industrial, and now it's before the board to make all these zoning changes as they come up?
Commissioners, I can answer that one. The 2020 comp plan update was merely goals, objectives, and policies. Did not address the mapping for future land use at all. And that should be one of the things we do in this next update. Once we go public and start getting feedback is to also think about and ask the public what they think about, updating the future land use map, which would then allow us to drive a wholesale rezoning for areas like this-
Mm-hmm.
If it's warranted. But at the moment, you've had Vlad present to you what's literally in the existing comp plan.
Because it seems like if we're not gonna, if we don't update the comp plan correctly, then it becomes a shift in power to the board to start making these discretionary decisions for these applicants, as opposed to understanding why we should make this change and how it benefits the county and the citizens. Now it becomes, well, we don't have anything updated. And technically, this really ought to be commercial, because we've already started commercial above and below, north and south of these properties.
Yes, you're correct. It's fair to say that most municipalities struggle with keeping a comp plan map up to date, because it needs to be done every four or five years. Most places do it every five to 20 years.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Matarri, if I may add, based on staff analysis, when you read the report, the, one of the primary purposes of the suburban comp plan designation is to provide economic development opportunities to serve the surrounding community. And the, one of the primary purposes for a country designation is to promote economic activities that minimize environmental impacts and do not require a full range of services. We find that a nursery business where predominantly they will be storing landscaping materials would fit precisely into that criteria for both the suburban as well as country comp plan designation.
Didn't we have a conditional zoning?
A C Z D A?
Yeah, as a, an opportunity to address these issues when a property owner wants to change the zoning for a particular use, as opposed to just changing it permanently?
We also address that in the staff analysis of our report, where we state that in some cases, when the applicant wants to limit the scope of uses based on the proposed zone change, that as conditional zoning development would be applicable. However, we do not find that it is necessary, in this case specifically, as you stated, there are numerous parcels north and south of the subject property along Highway 95 that are more intensely zoned than rural, as well as we believe that a nursery business does not require the same level of services or has the same intensity as you would have for a more typical commercial operation.
I understand.
So we think those two observations in conjunction do not warrant a C Z D A at this time, and that's also addressed in the staff analysis.
But the nursery business could change in three years.
You're absolutely correct.
So our decision is being based off a nursery business that could change in three years. And so therefore, you know, what you're doing is you're opening the door to say, well, we realize it's just this business, and it's not that intense, so it's no big deal. But that can change. It also enhances the value of the property, because now it's commercial, so they could sell it and then, and then operate any business within the commercial designation.
Absolutely. But if you use that, I don't know if that's the right word, philosophical, philosophical analogy with every zone change, you would have to impose a conditional zoning development agreement every time.
Well, not necessarily, but I understand what you're saying, you know.
Commissioners, if I may, if you're inclined to approve this, it would, it should be with the understanding that it could very well be a more intensive use. And that's perfectly fine if you agree. The staff thinks it's agreeable, because you expect to have commercial zoning along major arterials. We just haven't updated our zoning map countywide in the eleven years I've been here.
Yeah.
Another point to add that, to that, and Vlad has mentioned it, but I felt, felt the need to reiterate it, given the concerns raised, is at least two of the parcels would be subject to a special notice permit, so they couldn't change the use unless they got, on those parcels, unless they got a new special notice permit.
You want us to wait?
And if we've, you know, depending on the traffic generation, the third parcel could also be subject to that requirement.
You know, I understand that. And the only reason I even just asked these questions, and I'm not averse to this, is, you know, when, to your point, Pat, we've had a hearing where there was a storage unit to be put in, I believe, a little further north, and the community was largely adamant they did not want that. And then when they found out that I D T had already approved an overpass, it just, they're like, how did that happen? We had no idea. And so, yeah, there are these public noticing requirements, but, you know, a lot of times, people just don't know. And the kind of vigilance that has to be put forth in order to keep up with every little thing that's happening around you is a lot of energy. It does, we don't have these push notifications as much as people have to just, they have to keep watching the website and paying attention to the newspaper, which at 10,000 readers means that not many people are going to see it.
And then the mailings, the notifications of these things?
Assuming that they get received, yes. We, right now, we have a contingency of people who are contacting me, saying, I haven't gotten my tax bill. And those were mailed in November.
That's actually a good idea. So if there is a way, we could, you know, do something like on social media or something to enable people to have, get push notifications if they want them.
Yeah, yeah. So, but those are my questions. And it's clear that, you know, we want to have an updated map, so that the more updated it is, the less concerned we have to be about people being against these issues. Because the more outdated it is, and someone's against these changes, I think we need to take more notice to that, because the map says, in essence, what we're supposed to be.
Commissioner Matarri, can you elaborate? Moving forward, would your direction be to have a conditional zoning development as a guiding tool for these types of applications, just so that staff understands what our positions should be when we make initial contact with the applicants?
Well, in a perfect world, it seems like we need to be updating our map. I mean, Director Callahan's been here for 11 years, and we have not updated the map, right? So an outdated map means that we're going to have this patchwork of requests that keep coming in, okay? And so what, to what end? What is it supposed to look like? And that's the point of the comp plan, is to say, okay, these major arteries are supposed to have commercial, light industrial, perhaps industrial. And the, you know, the minor arteries might have only commercial, commercial. And then, of course, there's residential, and people have an expectation of what is, this community will be. But right now, there is no expectation if we are just piecemeal, changing the zoning, and not having a rhyme or reason, in essence, except the applicant submitted and is requesting. So I don't have a problem with this particular application, because it's right on 95. But we're going to continue to get these until we update this map. And the map is really the guide for us, no different than when we have these C U Ps in the question or a special easement. How does that benefit the citizens of this county if we are to give an exception to somebody that otherwise really shouldn't get it? Because we have a, a, a plan laid out for what the, you know, what we're supposed to be doing in the next 10 years or so. That's the point of a C U P is for, to come before the board and ask for an exception to what is already laid out for the community. Same thing with an easement, like the one we've had just the past couple of weeks, where we're being asked to approve something where there's a lot of other stakeholders involved, and they haven't really been involved.
Understood.
Okay, are we done with staff? All right. And then Commissioner Brooks needed to be excused, and he may return when he's able. So with that, I would call on the applicant representative, Stephanie Blalack wishes to speak.
Vlad's going to pull up my PowerPoint. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Stephanie Blalack. I'm a land use planner with Fairdys. Our address is three nine oh six North Schreiber Way in Coeur d'Alene. And I am here today representing Eric and Elaine Christian, who are the owners of the site for the proposed zone change. The Christian family are lifelong residents of the area. The family owns and operates New Leaf Nursery, which is located on the corner of Lancaster and Government Way, approximately two and a half miles south of the proposed site. The nursery employs 82 people at the peak of their season. The family would like to expand their successful retail nursery business and offer additional services at the proposed site. Two of these three parcels front Highway 95, but all three are accessed off Pope Road, which was built as a frontage road a few years back. This area has seen a tremendous growth in the commercial, industrial, and mining zones as the population grows and more resources are needed. The proximity to Highway 95 makes these parcels fronting the highway a perfect fit for the commercial zone. This map illustrates all of the zone changes along this two and a half mile stretch of Highway 95. My clients make the 20-second zone change in a relatively short distance. The Highway 95 North-South Transportation Corridor provides the access that businesses need to operate and grow. The site was purchased by the Christians over 20 years ago. When I T D came through and approved Highway 95 and constructed Pope Road, the Christians' parcel was used for storing and staging- parcel was used for storing and staging of ITD materials. That's why you see some site disturbance there. The location, topography, and easy access were ideal. Comprehensive Plan Compatibility: The two parcels straddling Pope Road are designated as suburban, which states non-residential uses should be limited to services and industries needed to support the rural transitional area. The proposed site would provide topsoil screening and landscaping materials supporting construction activities in this growing area for both the private and the public sectors. The secondary purpose of the suburban designation is to provide economic development opportunities that serve the surrounding community. A nursery wholesale business will be a benefit to the growing community at this location. The parcel on the east side of Pope Road is designated as country, and the secondary purpose of the country designation is to promote economic activities that minimize environmental impacts and do not require a full range of services. Again, as Vlad stated, a nursery will be a lower intense use, creating minimal environmental impacts on the surrounding community. All three parcels requesting the zone change are in compliance with the comp plan. Commenting agencies had no objections to the zone change. A few of those agencies will have requirements during the development process of the site. Agencies will be given another opportunity to comment on the proposed zone change after the zone change is approved and before development commences through the special use permitting process. Those agencies will be given the ability to place conditions of approval with each future use of that site. This picture is taken standing on site looking to the east. The unique topography of the site places the subject property at the bottom of this rimrock, with the adjoining residences to the east being above and removed. Due to the unique feature of the neighboring parcels, they will not be adversely affected by the proposed zone change. Their views are of Highway 95 and beyond. The adjacent neighbor to the north and south of the site also fronts Highway 95 and has no objections to the zone change. I actually spoke to him, his name's Ken Eila, and he may be coming in for a zone change as well. So to wrap up, the corridor along Highway 95 has been transitioning away from residential to commercial for several reasons. A few of those are the Highway 95 noise and traffic, along with the mining, light industrial, and commercial operations that exist, making these parcels ill-suited for residential development. The proposed zone change is consistent with and compatible with the development pattern and expected future land uses in the vicinity of the subject properties. There's adequate infrastructure to support the proposed uses of the parcels. The zone change would bring an economic benefit to Cootin County residents by increasing the tax base and providing additional jobs. Staff supports the zone change. The hearing examiner states in his report, this application should be approved. The property's highest and best use will be found under the commercial zoning designation. That does conclude my presentation. I can answer any questions?
Questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ben Christian, applicant, may wish to speak?
Nothing said.
Okay, and then Elaine does not wish to speak, so. Is there anybody else here in favor or against this proposal? Anybody on Zoom, Ben? Okay, then I just have one question for staff, and that is, if, well, any commercial property that is vacant land, when they come for their building permit, then all the agencies are then notified for that particular use, is that correct?
Yes.
And then through that process, is there an opportunity for public comment and potential conditions on the use?
There may be if it triggers a conditional use permit, use that is, or a special notice permit. The special notice you can think of is a baby conditional use permit. Both of those can trigger public input. Otherwise, there is none.
Okay, okay, that answers my question. I'm ready to end.
Yeah, I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations for ZOON 24-0006, Venue Properties LLC.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, thoughts?
Well, clearly, the applicant's request fits with what should be happening in that area, you know? I think the point of my comments is really that we should try to make it a point to update these maps, get our comp plan, you know, finished sooner rather than later, so that we have defined what should be happening in different places in the county. We have other properties south that are still under the rural designation. Someone might want to build a home right on 95, and it becomes incongruent as to what it really should be, and that's part of the reason why I ask these questions, is because eventually the board is going to be presented with all of these different decisions that become, and one could even argue at some point, perhaps even arbitrary, as to what the community is going to look like. And there are good planning techniques for how a community should look, and I realize that organic is perhaps one of those techniques, but if you go back in time and look at how a lot of communities were kind of thought out where the zoning was, and commercial and industrial and residential and things like that, you know, there was a method to it, and it actually worked well for people. And so I just, I think that we should be thinking about that here, given the amount of growth that we're going through. But outside of that, I'm for it.
Okay, yeah, I don't have a problem, and to your point about people building houses, actually, houses are being torn down for commercial and light industrial uses. I live in this area, so.
I understand that, and I don't disagree with that because it's a better use of the land. However, if someone wanted to build a house there, it would be incongruent, even though that is exactly what it's zoned for, and so we should be looking at zoning for what it should be used and not what it could be used for.
I know, I guess my caveat would be, even when we get the updated map, I am not in favor of changing people's zones without their consent, so that would just be something else to consider down the way, so. With that, I would take a motion.
I move that we approve ZOON 24-0006, Venue Properties LLC.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, thank you, folks. Okay, item three, ORA 24-0009, Agricultural Protection Areas, and Director Callahan.
Commissioners, David Callahan, Community Development Director. This item is before you to fulfill House Bill 608, which requires that you establish a commission and adopt regulations that allow home, or property owners to voluntarily designate their land to be agricultural protection areas. That House Bill 608 was effective July 1st of this year, so it didn't give us a lot of time to do what's before you, but Pat's done his usual excellent crafting, and I have 100% confidence that what's before you meets the state law and is appropriate. I would just note that this is a little out of the ordinary in that normally a code amendment would go to the Planning Commission and then you, but here, there's two reasons why that doesn't make sense. First of all, Pat's very thoroughly reviewed what state law says, and in this certain circumstance, there's no requirement to go to the Plan Commission, but it also would be frankly, if you'll pardon my Southern Texas approach, a silly waste of time because the state law demands this, so it doesn't much matter what the Plan Commission thinks about it. So there you have my view in a nutshell. I hope that's helpful. Pat and I are here if you have any questions.
I just have two comments in addition to what David said. First of all, I want to give credit where credit is due. Seth Grigg and his crew at IAC did a really good job of providing a model ordinance for counties to adopt this, and I was able to just dovetail off that, and the only changes I made really were to make it compatible with our existing land use and development code. And the other thing is, you may recall, you've passed a resolution creating an Agricultural Protection Area Commission. Since then, I've been informed that the board would like staggered initial terms, so I have prepared a resolution to amend the original resolution to provide for that, and that should be before you on Tuesday, so. And we'll talk about that a little more at the status update meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, are we gonna, are we, okay, so we'll approve it at the business meeting?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. With that, I would call for any public testimony in favor or against the Agricultural Protection Area Ordinance. Nobody on Zoom still? No one in the audience? Okay, I would take a motion.
I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations for ORA 24-0009, Agricultural Protection Areas.
Second. Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right, I thought it was extremely well done, and I was actually believed that Pat could have written this as spectacularly as was written, but I understand that, you know, time savings with IAC was very beneficial, so.
Well, between Pat and IAC, they make a good team.
Yes, excellent.
So I move that we approve ORA 24-0009, Agricultural Protection Areas.
Second.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, that ends our public hearings this morning, and we can go on to our deliberations. Item four, MSF 24-0001, Lone Mountain Estates, Ninth Edition, and Planner Finkel, please.
And I'm okay with an abbreviated presentation, if you're okay with that?
Yes.
I'll be very brief, Commissioners. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootin County Community Development, this is a request for final plat approval of Lone Mountain Estates, Ninth Edition. This is actually the second phase of the preliminarily approved fourth-phase project. The original approval was granted in October of 2022 and consisted of 111 residential lots on over 580 acres of land. Since then, the applicant went forward and plotted Phase One, Eighth Edition, with 37 lots and one remaining tract for the benefit of the future phases. That has been plotted, and the applicants have since constructed the infrastructure improvements. At this time, what is before you is a final plat request for Phase Two, Ninth Edition. In this case, the applicants would like to plat 29 additional lots and retain open space tract for future phases. They have constructed some of the roads and are currently in the process of constructing the remaining road improvements for which they have bonded with the Highway District. The applicants have also upgraded the existing Lone Mountain Estates water system to benefit these new lots within this plat. They have not contracted any, constructed any of the lateral work, any of the distribution lines. They did submit a bond to the county in the amount of 150% of the estimated value of improvements. So until such time that both the roads, as well as the water system improvements are complete, our department will not issue any certificates of occupancy for any of the residences. They will be able to move forward with construction of those homes, but nobody will be able to occupy them. So that, that's as brief as I can get it, and if you should have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Okay, questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right, thoughts?
Well, you know, one of the things that stands out to me with this particular project is the fact that they have their own reservoir for water, which I thought was a really nice touch considering that most of our projects include putting more wells into the aquifer like that, so. It's already been approved, this is a multi-phase project, and it fits within the confines of the guidelines, five acre minimum lot size, things like that. So to me, this is more of a formality.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve MSF 24-0001, Lone Mountain Estates, Ninth Edition.
Second. Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, that concludes our business for this morning, 10:47, meeting adjourned.